Okay, it's February 27th. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order for PM. I'm going to do a roll call of planning commission members present. We have Howard Tripp. Abby Dolman.
Here.
Joey Edwards.
Here.
Lupita Ovidia. Jamie Seifer. And county commissioners, Commissioner Marcela.
Here.
Commissioner Mudge. And Commissioner Fiedler. No changes or additions?
No changes or additions.
We have minutes from January 23rd and February 13th. I wasn't at the first one, so I'm not sure we have enough to do the quorum for that. So we may need to table those to the next meeting as well. So we'll go ahead and do that. Let's move down to old business. We have file 22-35 and 22-36, which is the 1719 Popper Street CUP and site plan review. And it sounds like there is a request to table that to March 27th.
Yes, the applicant is working on their engineering review at this time and are hopeful to get that in to be sometime this week. And then they, in enough time for them to be ready for the public hearing on March 27th.
Okay, any questions on that request to table? Okay, can I get a motion to table that application to the 27th?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we table files 22-35 and 22-36 to the March 27th Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
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 And file 22-41, which is the Climax Revival Special Events Facility CUP, there is a request to table that also to March 27th.
Yeah, I'll move that we table 22-41 to March 27th.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
The only thing that I just wanted to mention to the planning commission and the board is that we'll have three files on the 27th. So we'll have these two plus we'll have the Conrad Lindis Outfitter and Guide CUP. So we'll have three files. So that'll be a good date to mark on your calendar to be a big hearing night. But luckily, they are all CUPs and one site plan review. But it will be a pretty, it will be a full agenda on the 27th.
Is that Outfitter and Guide CUP going because you have received that?
That's correct, yes. And they are not a new outfitter. They have been, that particular operation and site have been used by CMC and a couple other groups within that, you know, for at least a period of a year. That's been going on for several years, so, yes. But yes, it's outside the moratorium.
So is there anything so far on the agenda for the 13th?
Not so far. We can, I'm happy to take anything that anyone has that might want to put on the agenda for the 13th. If there's ideas or there's things that we maybe started talking about or something that, you know, you'd like to have a work session on, you know, anything like that. We can certainly take requests for the 13th.
Yeah, I would love to see, Abby, and if you have something too, but I would love to see us start our overview conversation on planning, basically for future map slash code slash so many things. And there's a couple of discussions I've had, like in the EDC group and another one that perhaps there's a couple of other groups out there that might be able to help, you know, give us some tools to get us started in those conversations and then engage the community on those conversations as to where development should happen, where it shouldn't happen, how it should look, what it should look like, what does the community want it to look like, those kinds of things, without it going down the giant rabbit hole of a whole, you know. I mean, obviously, that can be a really giant discussion, but also try to keep it focused to something that's attainable for us to start looking at some simple changes we could make to the code this year. So I would love to start that conversation and I can meet with you outside of this and kind of show you a couple of the ideas that I have as far as how that can lead that discussion. But Abby, did you have something else to?
No, I was just curious about schedule wise, but yeah, that'd be a great use of time, for sure.
Um, and I just, I think now might be, I know not everybody's on here, but this might be a good time. The application that got dropped last week, or not last week, last meeting, for the property on the east side. I know that there's a fairly well organized giant group getting together on some things with that. And because technically the application's been pulled, they're wanting to talk to a lot of us. I spoke to somebody about it today and I said, I think that that's still a bad idea. And I thought it'd be a good discussion point here and so I'll give my opinion and then others can weigh in on it. But I think that the perception, if we, as planning commissioners or county commissioners, go to any of these meetings that are opposed to this development that is, may not have their active application in, but is obviously going to be presenting that application forward and we're receiving information and receiving input and essentially creating a bias before that application comes, I think that all it does is create a means to, a question of bias and lack of integrity if we end up denying that application down the road. And I think that that then creates a potential for a lawsuit. So I just thought it would be a good conversation to have here so that everybody's kind of on the same page of what they feel like is reasonable. And maybe Chris needs to weigh in on that too, but I think that if there are several meetings being held opposing such subdivision and then we go and we're attending those meetings and then we essentially vote no on that without it going through the correct public process, that that could be a liability for the county, so.
I don't even know what you mean by that.
I just heard about them today, about an hour ago.
Same.
But I do know that it's a large enough group that they might start meeting at three. So, and that they were looking to approach planning commissioners because now we're allowed to talk about it. And I said, I don't think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
So I just thought it would be good for us to have the conversation now because it, not just this application, right? It should really apply, and I guess for instance, in my line of work, if I'm working with a developer and he knows he's buying this piece of property and he's going to develop it and I give him any insight and I look at his plans and give him any insight before he's submitted an application, I still end up telling him and I'm refusing myself because I know too much that wasn't brought forward. The idea is that we're supposed to be unbiased and we go into the application hearing and not, and only be given the same information that everybody else has been given in that hearing. And I can't do that, right? I can't say that that's, that's truth, that I only used information brought in from a hearing. So I guess I'm using that as an example of where I think that the appropriateness is, that my understanding is that our vote in our consideration of applications has to come from what's the information that's being gathered in the public hearing, which is where the expertise communication comes from. And if we're gathering that information beforehand and bringing that to our, to our table, decision making table, then I think that that's a problem.
Well, and I will just let everyone know, I have reached out to the group because it is being facilitated, I guess, early on potentially by, maybe through the Housing Coalition. So I've just reached out to the Housing Coalition manager or facilitator and just asked her to meet with staff because we certainly want, you know, a very robust public engagement process. And so just trying to provide a little bit of that guidance, like those voices and thoughts and opinions should absolutely be brought into the public hearing. And if they want to, you know, work with staff ahead of time to better understand the code or better understand what the review process is or so they can decide if they want, if there's gaps or there's things that they need. But we're going to, really, you're going to try to reach out to the group because there's, you know, we're always the portal. Staff is always the portal to take that information and give out information. You know, the Level 7 has been on the website and the New Seminal will be on the website as well. I am happy to meet with those groups as staff to just preserve the public hearing process for everyone, make sure that when the information comes to you, it's, everyone hears the same thing. All the information is a very transparent and equal process. And just preserve the hearing because the worst thing that could happen is that the planning commission of five, that we have to have numerous people recuse themselves and then we have, you know, basically ended up undermining the public hearing process. So happy to be that conduit and I have already reached out to try to engage and just, you know, make sure that everyone is, knows that they have that opportunity to be present within the process, but just make sure that we're preserving the process. So actively working on that as well.
Because I have like a little bit more, sorry, sorry, oh, I can pick it up. Like a little bit more of a flexible view on how to preserve the hearing. Like, for example, like with the CJK Mill, like they had a public open house like up at the Vishatri on their technology. Like, I don't think that was ex parte communication. Did I learn stuff that wasn't rigorously to the letter introducing the hearing? I don't know. But it was, you know, I think, so in this context, I think being an organizer of that group would be problematic, you know. Writing a letter to the paper, opposing it would be pretty problematic, you know, to maintain some sense of impartiality. But like going to a public meeting at great to hear what's being said in public? I mean, now, I don't know, like, should I not read the paper?
No, no.
I guess, I just feel like, these are like organized, specific against an application. There's future coming, yeah.
I mean, I know they have concerns, but like at least what I have been told is, I mean, they have a model of like community agreements that are sort of outside of the, you know, the, what might come out of the hearing. Again, I'm, I, I totally get it.
Is there some reason that you couldn't have that group bring that information here for every one of your planning commissioners and county commissioners to hear rather than the couple of you that go? And that's the problem I see.
Yeah.
I see it as, if you are going to make a decision as a commissioner or planning commissioner on an application and you went, but the public that's hearing and attending the application hearing didn't go, half of your board didn't go, you're operating on information that is not within the public, the public hearing.
I want to be really careful too because I'm, I'm, I think I'm thinking along the lines of like Jeff's thinking too because I, I think it can be very nuanced and like, I do think that we should have pre-application meetings with the board of commissioners and with the planning commission potentially before an application is accepted as complete. And that is outlined in our code as acceptable practice and it is not ex parte. It is only ex parte when an application is accepted and you've set dates for hearings, et cetera, et cetera. So I do often feel like there's a gap or some disservice in our process that we don't exercise to the fullest to inform both the applicant and the decision makers, you know, in, 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 in ever improving that like preparation for and position for an application. So I just, I, I understand what you're saying and also like if that were ever to take place beforehand, I hope that all of that information, those questions either go through staff or as decision makers, certainly is my sense that it's my responsibility to bring up all of the, even as I talk to staff, which is never ex parte communication, I take it upon myself to always try to bring up those questions for clarity for, so everyone can have that, that framework in which, and my personal justification of whatever like decision is I'm making. So I just, yeah.
Kayla, absolutely. Oh, yeah. Kayla. Kayla, do you have your hand up? Maybe not.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, there, maybe.
We still can't hear you. We don't have a very good connection.
Can you?
We were just on a text thread saying how bad everyone's internet disability, so.
Can you text to us or chat?
Can you chat?
Chad is disabled, you guys.
Oh.
I can't, I'm sorry, I can't. I think it has to be down here. No, it doesn't work.
Is it under the little dots down below?
Oh, yeah. Up everywhere and at the bottom.
Thank you, Joey.
Or no, that's just.
Kayla, chat could be enabled or should be enabled for everyone, but we could not get.
We couldn't hear what you said.
You weren't coming in on the audio. If you want to add something in the chat.
And I, I guess I would love to get like, then I, if that's the case, then I would love to get clarification from legal on how that works because that's, it was just ingrained to us for so many years to not take any information from outside of the public hearing in making your decision. And so if that's not true, that changes a lot of things.
Well, but I think like leading up to an application, so many conversations can be had and you can't base.
I guess I just wonder though that like, this application already was here. Everybody kind of already knows what it is.
This might be a different application.
And this is something that like this group is.
Technically made enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, this is for the process. Perception is reality.
And that's really where I'm coming from. I know that technically the book says that, but can, if I, if I as a developer or me as an applicant came forward and found out that like there was this big group that was rallying to come up with all the ways to get my application disproved and had all of you guys at it, and then I came to the public hearing and, you know, felt like I gave a really great application that you should approve and you denied it, I feel like I would have, I feel like I would have justification to say, well, I'm suing you because you rallied and you had, you had your minds laid out before I even had my application. And I think that that's the perception that I worry about.
I mean, for what it's worth, I probably wouldn't attend any of those or go out of my way because I think your point, like they should, if they want to organize and figure out what best way to participate in the public hearing process, that's most appropriate. And when I think about those like preliminary conversations, I think that those are more like with the applicant to vet holes and pros and cons with staff.
Right, exactly.
Rather than like even one-on-one and/or like that public, gathering public.
Yeah. And I kind of, and I kind of, you know, and the person I talked to was in complete agreement when I explained that. And I think that's what they'll take back to the group. And I kind of said the same thing. I was like, I really think that what you want to do is you want to organize your conversations with Bryce and Anne and make sure that they're kind of your conduit for understanding when the applications are coming, when this is happening and those kinds of things so that you make sure you have all the information you can to make a really great presentation on public hearing, at public hearing time. But that, that really you want that information coming out at public hearing rather than in the discussion phase of whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know how much time we might have to further like have the conversations around this, but I do find it very interesting that some planning commissioners are making comments when, in my opinion, there have been participations and votes where there's like a clear monetary benefit of some people and they have not recused themselves, which is even clearer to me, a conflict, than this idea of like communicating about an application that's not yet accepted or submitted.
Yeah, I also, yeah, I mean, I totally get the slippery slope point and like the, you know, perception is reality, but at the same time, I feel like part of our job as elected officials or even planning commissioners is to sort of channel the views of the community. So how am I supposed to know that if I don't hear generally what some people are thinking about development?
Well, I think that's the idea, right? Is they come to that meeting and they engage. And that's where like us having these other more actual general conversations where we're inviting public input and having those perhaps meetings, community meetings at great, is the avenue for that. I feel like if it's application specific, it's, whether the application is in, it's like they already know it's there and it's already coming in and it's already, you know, I feel like that's, it's a, it's a rally against one specific property owner and that to me is the problem that you end up having. Like it's not a general conversation about development in Lake County. It's a, and I think that it could be, it could be, it could be different. I mean, if this was a conversation just about housing, of course, we would want to be at the table. But again, like I think the most important person to like weigh in on this is probably not here. And that's probably, just to see what legal has to say about that, I think would be helpful for me anyway to understand where we need to make. Because I don't, I, I don't want to waste time participating in an application that's going to end up being questioned or challenged down the road because we're not thinking about those kinds of things, so. And I think it would also be good, like whatever the decision is, if the decision is no, but it's totally fine and who cares? You know, if, as long as the application is not submitted, there are no rules, then great. But I just think everybody needs to be on the same page as to what that looks like. Does it, is it helpful? And to your point, Jeff, is there something that staff can assist with in feeling like you have that information? So if staff meets, you know, I've already, I've already reached out to ask for a meeting to meet with the facilitator or who's proposing to facilitate. Christie is proposing to facilitate these meetings. I've reached out to just say, hey, great, let's, let's do a talk. Like, how is that going to look and how can we, you know, always have, been excited about a community connection and helping with engagement? So how can we, you know, work together to bring that before everyone is prepared for the public hearing? So you get all of the information. The hope is that we would work with them, educate them about, you know, what's within the code and what, you know, what, what kind of things are out there and what are, what are available? And then if, you know, if, if there's more that's needed to completely understand that. But I'm just wondering if, if working together with the group, so it's the county is, you know, we're still your conduit, we're still working with them, Bryce and I, to help them and help them also explain how they can put together a presentation so that they can, they, their viewpoint and their points can be equally brought in as evidence and on the record for you and, you know, I just, I don't, I, I hear that maybe like, you know, maybe, like maybe there'd be a missed opportunity or you wouldn't get enough information. Is there a way that we can, you know, work that out so that it is, you know, really, you know, as we've got that good public engagement, that voice, those opinions, those thoughts are there that night?
I mean, I don't worry, I don't worry so much about that because I think it, I mean, at least the Housing Coalition folks are relatively sophisticated and know how to come and organize public comment and hearing and input into the formal process. Where I think there's a grayer area is, I mean, at least as I understood it, they are actively pursuing this idea of an agreement with the developer outside the legal framework of the hearing process and the formal county decision. And it's that external process that I feel like, I mean, yeah, I, I mean, I may need to be educated on like the legal boundaries, but it's like if, if actually an agreement with a large development is going to happen between community members and the developer, I'm kind of curious as a county commissioner, how that discussion's going. I have views on that, you know.
Well, and I think that those agreements, this is going to be all new to the group and the facilitation of this, a CBA. And, you know, the leverage from the onsite is support. You know, that's the leverage for the developer to go into a binding agreement is support, community support. And so, you know, that may be successful, it may not be successful. You know, on the developer, you know, it needs to meet certain checkboxes for the county as far as infrastructure and housing and the things that, that, that will be on the table through the county process. I think that this is really a new, very, very new, unvetted idea. I think it could be potentially great, but I just, I think it, it's all very new. So I think some time, you know, like we said like an hour ago or maybe today. You know, I had talked to a lady, a neighbor that had brought up a CBA example from Grand Junction for a downtown renewal project. And that is kind of, I think that resident who is being great and being very proactive that we gave a Google file to and all of the feedback and comments to, I think has, you know, that's kind of spurred the conversation. But what I would like to do is have a chance to meet with Christie and better understand what they would want out of a CBA. What, what, what is it outside of the subdivision process that we had that they, they want to ask of the developer? I mean, you know, the examples are, are things like you're going to bring in local workers and give them a living wage. And I mean, you know, there's, so, you know, what is the ask? What is the purpose? What would be the, you know, it's so new that I'm not even sure what the ask from the, from the community members would be or what they would seek to gain outside of what the county would be looking for. So I think it's just so new that I think maybe a little time to better digest it and understand what the perspective is would be really good. And that can come through staff to everyone in the same format. And so maybe, because I think maybe it's so new that they're not even sure what they're going to be looking for. So it just seems like those early meetings might be kind of getting their feet under them. And so I think it'd be better maybe to make some thoughts after it's kind of gelled and been vetted a little bit, just some thoughts.
Well, another, another thought and to your question of what staff can do, I, I would love if there's like public comment that comes in or this group continues to like relay the, whatever comes out of those meetings or concerns. If you could just couch that in a staff perspective to the planning commission and the VOCC that like, hey, y'all might want to really focus in on like this aspect of the application or consider concerns that might arise in X, Y, and Z aspect of the, I mean, you don't have to necessarily point to the public comment or who did it or that it was even public comment, but I think as you even recommend these things and like, oh, maybe we didn't think about both sides of this, like.
Absolutely.
Would you, would you guys continue to just, I mean, you would email all of us together to tell us all the same thing?
Absolutely. As well as any comment that comes in from the public will go into the Google file, into the Google Drive that you have the link to. So anytime we get comment from the public, you know, we get it, we're even into the record. But ahead of time, the new standard this year, and it has been in the past some, but moving forward, certainly this year, is that all of that public comment will be in the Google Drive. You'll get an update, you know, that something's been added. And so as those comments come in, they're in there and then, you know, certainly referring to them in the staff report by, by the time we get to that point.
Right.
But certainly want to alert you when those come in. And then that is, that is a common thread that everyone has and everybody hears and has access to it at the same time. So making sure that those are all shared too. And, and it is just really early in, in this idea. And so I was hoping, you know, to have those conversations and then I can sort my report back to. And then I can certainly report back to, like, these are, you know, some of the things that they're hopeful to do. Um, you know, is it just being a very uh collective and collaborative in putting together a presentation? About their concerns or are they going to seek trying to um do some kind of negotiation with the developer? And 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 to what purpose, so that um we can bring that information back to everybody at the same time? And and letting the group know what kind of things the county is going to be looking at through the development process. And continuing that idea that we talked about at the work session, um I can get that on the shared drive, the living document from the commissioners. Um the county, uh you talked about adding the planning commission in as well, that kind of living document of, you know, this, welcome to our community. This is who we are, these are projects that are important to us and making sure that um we are sharing that with all interested folks. So certainly can get that up and going and everybody can go in and edit and see, you know, and and we can continue adding. To that document and making sure that that goes out as we're having pre-apps or even not even before the pre-apps, when we're having those conceptual conversations. I think just really increasing communication could could go a long way.
Yeah, and maybe, like I said, maybe it's just something we, as far as in general in the future to on other applications and things, just something we run by, Chris. So that we're all, maybe we just have a policy that we're all kind of on the same page with, I think would be helpful.
Right, yeah, certainly I can bet all of that, I can follow up with Chris um and just talk that through. And on the thirteenth, um on uh March, is that right, yeah, March thirteenth, we could just, I could just follow up with this information. If that sounds good by that time, I I would think that I would have had an opportunity um to talk with Christie and just, you know, have a better understanding. And love to just grow that communication and make sure that we'll be, staff's being a resource both directions.
Cool, thanks, Ken.
Sure. Absolutely, I think it'd be really exciting to have, you know, enhanced communication and make sure that there's really great information available.
Uh, anybody have anything else? Okay, well, taking a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the February twenty seventh meeting of the planning commission.
All second.
Great, all in favor, aye.
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 Thanks, guys, have a good evening.
Bye.